Good call to tonight's meeting order, have the roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Kanega?
Here.
Rarden?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Binner?
Here.
Harton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
House on dinner, we'll do our vacation for us.
Break open please. Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day given to us and for all of your blessings upon us and this community. We ask that you be with us here tonight in this meeting, give us wisdom in your direction that we might please you in the things we work on tonight. In Jesus' name, again.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing I need is a special order of business. A police week proclamation. I have a proclamation that the Congress of the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as police officers memorial day and the week of May fifteenth falls as national police week. Whereas members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Hayesville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the state of Hayesville. And therefore, I retire from mayor of the city of Hayesville, call upon citizens of Hayesville and upon all patriotic civic and organizations to observe the week of May fourteenth to twentieth, twenty seventeen, as police week with appropriate ceremonies and. And further, all citizens of Hayesville observe Monday fifteenth as police officer memorial day in honor of those law enforcementers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their communities. So the motion on that proclamation, Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we approve the proclamation to for May fourteenth and twentieth, two thousand seventeen, as police week as well as May fifteenth as police officers memorial day.
Second.
Would second to approve the proclamation this week, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, I wanted to thank chief and our police officers, make sure you give them our appreciation. Friday at the Capitol building, they did a memorial for the three officers in the state that lost their lives in the line of duty last year. And it started out inside the Capitol, then went out to, there's a memorial on the northeast corner of the Capitol grounds. And it was a pretty moving ceremony and I just wanna make sure that you make sure, let your guys know that we appreciate what they do, putting their lives on the line every day. Thank you.
Move to item B, presentation of dividend check. Tony, you're up.
Excuse my attire, but I was at a high school soccer game and forgot my tie, I forgot my jacket, but I did not forget your check.
You're right, lying to the rest of us.
You're part of a program for municipality with EMC, there's four hundred and fifty cities that participate in this program. That's why it's been so successful for thirty-five years. Last year, your dividend was twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. This year, excuse me, your dividend is thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-two cents. And I'm very happy and proud to deliver this check. I appreciate your business.
Janie's always ready for that money.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tony, I appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good day.
Item one, I'm gonna move back to presentation approval minutes, A minutes of April twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Would second to approve the minutes, April twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on to item one, this is to be heard, A Kathy Hurley with the living history rendezvous.
Hello, everyone, I don't know if any of you will be able to hear that, but I hope you will, we're expanding and growing every year. We've expanded to a four-day event now. Basically, the first day on the second of November will be for their setup. But anybody's welcome to come watch because that's fascinating in itself, watching them put those together. The third is also set up, but we also are trying to get the school systems involved in this so they can come and have a one-on-one with these people. Because they have various fur trappers, they've got rope makers, skinners, the cavalry people are gonna try to make it down if we can, you know, get enough people to show up. Last year, we had Fort Riley's colored commanding general's color guard. The name's longer than I can remember most of the time, but they're active duty military and they, this is a special unit they have, but they tour all over the country. There's, in fact, there were four events that weekend. They had requested that I, they have asked that I request artillery for this year and I'm kinda debating whether I should or not. But anyway, we figure we had about three thousand people come last, this year, this last year, excuse me. So what I'm asking permission is if we can use Riggs Park, November second through the fifth, for the living history rendezvous.
Ms. Parton?
I make a motion, we allow living history rendezvous to use a park from November second to the fifth.
Second.
Would second to November fifth, second to the fifth for living history rendezvous, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, hopefully you come out and see us.
Item two, of rural license and bonds, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinance and resolution, we have none. Item four, announcements, notices and communications, A governed by announcements. I'm gonna be first with all the lights here. Actually, we can, if you didn't see, there was the pride organization, the Safe Kids, Wichita area and the Hazelwood Police Department doing the child's safety seat check here at the city building. They had fifty-eight children, they actually served, which means they checked fifty-eight car seats or gave away car seats to the children to make sure they were all safe, had the right kind of seat. We had people from Hayesville, Clearwater, Ark City and Wichita that came in. The car seats were given by a lot of our local businesses, if you didn't have one, no one was charged for one, they were given one free. That's because American Family Insurance, Community Bank, Doug's Auto, Eagle Senior Center, Hayesville True Value, Hayesville Friends of Library, Eagle Chamber of Commerce, H H Law Equipment, Trudeau's Automotive, Steel the Shelter, Heart Therapy and Derby Optimist. They donated so they could buy these, so we could give the seats away free. We have the most technicians of any city that's there in our police department. So they really stepped up this year and were out there helping, we were after one o'clock before we already got done. Those officers are Justin Jack, Brady Simmons, Dana Burns, Thomas Olden Nettle, Justin Hinke, Detective Chad Case and Lynn Davison. Those are all of our officers that were there working. We had several of the pride people, Brenda Gibson, Tom Gibson, Cindy Teleney, Kathy Binner, Detective Jenny Rose from the Wichita Police Department. And then there were pride members, Karen Hackney, Kathy Hurley, Pat Ferguson, Tim Massey, Sharon Harris, Mary Rosendale, Phil Nancy Harris, Russ Custer, myself and Tom Nickel, with Haley Casey, Courtney Delano and Aubrey Sidman. It was really a very good event, basically that getting all these car seats checked. This is the twentieth year, people know that they've done the car seat check and have served over twelve hundred kids in the last twenty years. So if you need to get your car seat checked, come by the police department and they'll do it for you. Other was, if you didn't make the mudbugs, you missed a real good show. So hopefully, at some other time, we can get them down because they put on a real good show out there, so mudbugging on Saturday. If that, Mr. Ewer?
Yes, I have a few announcements from the senior center. On the tenth of May, they'll be having Coffee with a Cock. Enjoy coffee and pastries while visiting with local law enforcement officers. This will be from eight to nine-thirty a.m. On the twelfth, we're having our potluck dinner. It's an evening event, it starts at five-thirty, fried chicken is provided and you have to make reservations and bring a side dish. The fifteenth at eleven a.m., they have what they call a mystery lunch and you won't have any idea where you're going until you board the bus and then they'll tell you. And it's a fun thing to do. On the seventeenth, at twelve-thirty, they're having Food Bank Bingo. All you have to do is bring two non-perishable food items or two dollars. And then on the nineteenth, at one p.m., they'll have Bible study and that's all we have.
Mr. Kessler?
I was just gonna mention the same thing as far as the mudbugs, it was a great concert, a lot of, a lot of people were out there, so hopefully, maybe we can get them again to come out later on. The other thing I wanted to mention was the park board again is asking for nominations for citizen of the year. That deadline is June first, to be turned in to the hack. And the hack does have the forums, I'm not sure if they're online or not. But they are at the hack, if you'd like to fill out a form to nominate somebody for citizen of the year.
Mr. Crum?
We're gonna talk about the library, Tuesdays is the book look boogie for parents and teachers, that's Tuesday mornings from ten to eleven. Storytimes every Wednesdays at ten-thirty. They're taking signups for their summer reading program, which is called Build a Better World, it's coming up. And then also this week, or this month, on May eleventh is their next Lego club. Genealogy group will be meeting on May thirteenth. And the next movie will be Monday, May fifteenth at six, and that movie will be Heaven is Real. And also wanted to mention a couple of things, the school district, the state Board of Education recognized about seventy schools in the state about how they're improving in things. And there were two schools in our district that received that, was Prairie Elementary and Ruth Clark. And then a program that the school uses here is called Capturing Kids' Hearts, it's a national program, it's used by over ten thousand schools and they have what they call showcase schools. And they recognize fifty-three schools nationwide. Seven of those schools were in Kansas and four of those schools were in Hayesville. Hayesville West Middle School was selected as one, Freeman Elementary. Ruth Clark, Prairie and Nelson Elementary were all named showcase schools. Then there was two schools from Goddard and one from Mays and those were all that were in Kansas. So Hayesville did well in that group with fifty-three out of thousands of school. And then also wanna remind everybody, congratulate the campus graduates that'll be graduating next weekend and the middle schools will be going through promotions. And just remind everybody that school's going to be out before our next meeting, so just remind everybody that there's gonna be a lot more kid traffic outside during the days while school's out, so please watch out. That's all I have.
Mr. Kanega?
Yes, with the filing deadline approaching, June first, I wanted to announce that I will not be seeking reelection. So I think we've had one person file from Ward Four, so you have until June first to make it interesting, anyone else from Ward Four that would like to file. So I just wanted to announce that, thank you.
Ms. Ewer?
I just wanted to remind everybody, the eighteenth of May is the last day of school. If they have an old calendar, it said the twenty-fifth of May, well now it's the eighteenth. And we get out at like eleven forty-five, elementary. And the middle, middle school and high school's different, but elementary will be out at one thirty-five.
Very good. Seeing no other announcements, we'll move on to item five, old business, we have none. Item six, another business, A consideration of approval of the bicycle and pedestrian plan. It's a very long plan, if you have any questions? Sure.
Good evening, mayor and commission, or council members. On April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, the planning commission voted to approve the final plan, the final bicycle and pedestrian master plan. And it's now in front of you, it should be in your pocket. And I'm ready for any questions.
Mr. Kessler?
I have several things that are either errors or if I can see by getting them correctly, I could either go over them now or...
Sure.
Okay. Page one, under city staff. The multimedia specialist.
Yes.
Should be different now.
Okay, I can change, I can add Sean, I can add James, Sean was instrumental in some of the artwork in this plan, that's why he was placed in there. So I could still add James if you'd like that. Will that work?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, page seven.
Okay.
For future parking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, should read Old Oak Disc Golf Course instead of Old Oaks.
Okay, okay.
That was pretty easy to put S on there.
Oh, and a period at the end of the paragraph, too.
Also, also, Freeman Soccer Field, there are no longer any Freeman Soccer Fields.
I do not see a Freeman, I thought I said no. After the period. Okay, they're no longer there, should I change that to the rental?
Well, that's what the new school's doing, I mean...
The Dorner Park?
No, no, that's...
We can have future parking, we'll have future parking in the former park. Okay, alright.
Alright, the next thing was the map of the, of the trails, I don't know if you were gonna update that or not, but the, the path along Meridian is now, you know, it's completely self-proposed.
Should be red, yep.
And I know there's also a proposed route from along Maine, North Maine, across the bridge, and then north, and then to the east along Sixty-third to Plankton Carpenter.
Okay.
Let's see, page nineteen. Uh, we're talking about the future, future pathways.
Mm-hmm.
Talked about the Randall Dorner Park, about six soccer fields, I believe there's gonna be eight soccer fields.
I looked, she would think I'd know where it was, oh, there was nothing.
Well, so right above the picture on the right-hand side, where it talks about the connecting at two Plankton Carpenter. Actually, it says a pathway along Sixty-third Street to Vulcan Fields, located in Plankton Carpenter Sports Complex. We only have one Vulcan Field, so I don't know if it would make better sense just to say the Plankton Carpenter Sports Complex.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Alright, okay.
Anything else, council? What would you like to do with this? Mr. Kessler?
Just like to say, it's a, it's really an in-depth plan, so I did read all through it and it took me a little while, but I mean, it was really in depth. I appreciate all the hard work that went into it. And with that, I'd like to go and make a motion to approve Hayesville Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
With the changes?
With the changes.
With, with the changes, yes.
Would second to approve the bicycle pedestrian plan as changed, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item B, consideration of twenty seventeen abatement provider.
Good evening, mayor and council, before you and I, I have proposals for nuisance abatement services this calendar year. This is in regard to code enforcement cases. We did get proposal back from Landscapes Incorporated, for a grade A was a hundred and fifteen dollars, grade B, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, grade C was five hundred and seventy dollars and grade D was one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Grade A and grade B were five dollars cheaper than last year and grade C and D were ten dollars cheaper. If you have any questions, if you don't, I have some requesting authorization, except the proposal from Landscapes Incorporated.
Mr. Crum?
Just curious, Tony, do you know why three of the groups didn't, because hasn't Joe Jacks even been the one doing it for us?
No, Landscapes Incorporated was our last calendar year. Most of them expressed that they were very busy for the summer.
Okay, so just...
Okay, yeah. One of the other ones got a big contract with City of Wichita, so that's why they declined to submit a proposal.
Okay, well, first, no other questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the nuisance abatement services with Landscapes Incorporated, as the price is listed.
Would second to approve Landscapes Incorporated as our abatement provider. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item C, consideration agreement with the Rainbow Fireworks.
Good evening, mayor and council, once again, we're looking at hiring Rainbow Fireworks to put on our show for Fourth of July. This is the same company that's done this for several years, this is the same price as last year. Try to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, just looking for an approval.
Mr. Kessler?
I have one correction on the contract itself. The heading of it actually says a fireworks production contract for the dollar amount. It's written in right as far as eight thousand, five hundred, but they spelled it wrong, it says eight thousand, five thousand dollars.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. If you wanna approve that with corrections, I can get that.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contract with those changes.
Second.
Would second to approve the contract with Rainbow Fireworks, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, consideration request to private fishing at Riggs Park.
And second thing is with Fourth of July events, we always request that we put up no fishing signs in the park from June twenty-seventh through July fourth. So I want to stand like authorization to put those up so we can preserve the fish that we put in the pond for the fishing derby.
Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we do not allow fishing in Riggs Pond from June twenty-seventh through July fourth, when the children's fishing derby takes place.
Second.
Would second to approve the private fishing at Riggs Park for Fourth of July? Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to apartment reports, A and paid service as well.
Zach has some Bike Month announcements.
Good evening, mayor and council, it is Bike Month. If you came in here on your way in, you could have seen the lime green fix-it stand. That was funded in part by Park Board and Pride Committee. That will be placed over in, by Old Oaks, or Old Oak Disc Golf, Disc Golf Course, kind of where we have a rack and a bench and we'll be able to put a camera on it. But you wanna really have those in neighborhoods where there's kids who don't have the tools or the air compressors in their garages to fill up their, you know, fill up their air in their tires. So that will be kind of unveiled at the May Oral Bike Ride, which will be on Thursday, May eighteenth at seven o'clock. We're also calling it the Mayor Bike Ride and Expo, because we will have some booth space available. We're having Wichita area Safe Kids will be there handing out helmets, H3 will be there. We will all have like kind of a small like economic development booth set up, or we'll have hack membership signup sheets available. Bike Walk Wichita is coming in to do kind of tune-ups and other repairs and we're kind of opening the gates to whoever else wants to kind of set up. It's free of charge, we're just gonna block out some parking. We normally have done, the first two we did over at the Vicker Station, but we have a new route this year and we wanna bring it here to City Hall because we have a few unveilings. One, the fix-it stations, or the fix-it station and two, the bicycle racks that we have coordinated with the kids at Campus High School and the W A T C program. They have, the mayor has commissioned three racks to be made, one for City Hall, one for the police department and one for the Vicker Station. I went today to take pictures of them, they are, they're coming along quite nicely, these kids are super proud of them. Hopefully, you'll come out and support those unveilings. And then we plan on kind of doing more of these racks in the future, this is just kind of to kind of get the wheels rolling. And then the next day on the nineteenth is Bike to Work Day, we do our Bike to Work pit stop. We know most of you do not ride your bicycles to work, that's not the point, the point is, is for you to come and fill out a survey. We'll have Noah's Donuts there or bananas from H3, so you'll have the healthy alternative. We're gonna do this from seven to nine, before we'd gone earlier, but we noticed that there is kind of a gap from six to seven, so we decided to kind of downsize our time a little bit. But yeah, just real quickly, just with the passing of the plan, I'd submitted an application in twenty fourteen to become a bicycle-friendly community, not that we would pass, I just wanted the feedback. Top three things were, one, form a committee, which we have now codified, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Two was the master plan, which you just passed, and three, bicycle parking, which we are now hopefully accommodating a little bit better. So we're gonna, look, there's two periods where you, spring entry and a fall entry, and we'll probably look this year to resubmit and see what they say. The other thing, Coffee with a Cup was already mentioned. We'll also be doing on May eighteenth at the library at six p.m., the Home Buying One-O-One, which has come from the Residential Subcommittee of HFI. Mark Eastman, who's on HFI, will be doing that at the library for new home buyers. He'll have a finance officer there to answer questions and he'll also be able to help with credit rebuilding, so we'll get the word out on that. And then also, we are, we have the tree farm, we've, Boy Scouts came out and planted, HHS came out and planted. Big thanks to Tony and Curvia Public Works, Everett Price and of course, the mayor and Park Board for backing this. We do have some incentives trees, I'm trying to get the words out to the new home buyers to get these in the ground. If not, they'll have to wait till the fall, we kind of have a small window before we have to actually install them in the farm. So if you have a business or a new home, new home built, please get the word out. And then this will be the last... And then, uh, this'll be the last week, we'll put one more, more notice out for the community survey, and then we'll close that down and get the results out to you, so, thank you.
You there? Item B, Speaker Ten?
I have that.
Item C, Liz Sheehan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'll introduce our visiting officer as Lieutenant Greg Wright. He's our lieutenant in charge of the patrol section, so he's our visiting officer this evening. And I already covered Coffee with a Cop and Seatbelt Checks, so I just got those ready. For the, uh, we are having Coffee with a Cop.
And when is it?
Wednesday morning, eight a.m. at the Senior Center.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
In case anybody messes up.
It'd be cap conversation, is what I say.
Also, I wanted to give you some feedback on our last drug tech pack that we had. It was, um, this past Saturday, but the one before, at the Police Department. We took in a hundred and ninety-three pounds of medications that people didn't want anymore, brought in to dispose of them, so they brought them in, disposed of them properly, and we got those taken care of. So we did pretty good getting those drugs out of people's cabinets and, and off the streets, keeping them out of there and, uh, being disposed of properly. So I want to tell everybody, thanks for that. And that's all I got.
Ms. Crum, question?
It's that time of year, next meeting, can you give us a reminder of what curfew is, and can we make sure we got it running on Channel Seven?
Uh, we sure can.
Appreciate it.
I can't hear it, Channel Seven, because I don't run that park, but I will pass it on to those that do. Yep.
Item B, Public Works, huh?
Hi, no, thank you.
Item A, Recreation Version?
I want to make up for Tony having mentioned. End of school, like everyone has said, is coming up. We will have our final middle school dance next Thursday, May eighteenth, and it'll be athlete bike ride, so seven thirty to nine thirty over at the Activity Center. We are still taking registrations for the pool, summer swim lessons, pool rentals, and then season passes will be on sale. Pool opens on Saturday, May twenty-seventh. Summer camp enrollment for basketball and soccer is going on. We also have games beginning out at Plagans Carpenter this week, so if you hear anything that will be increased traffic out there. We have Kid to Park Day coming up on June tenth, it'll be from ten to twelve p.m. over in Kirby Park, just so everybody can kind of get that on their calendars. And then lastly, at this last park board meeting, they did approve the, um, flag design contest, so letters will be going out to various organizations. We're asking for submissions, submissions of a city flag design. All we're asking is if they include the Y and H. They can be submitted to the Activity Center or via email to hellohayesville@gmail.com. It's gonna be used in city marketing, other publications, so that will be due by Friday, July thirty-first, and at the August meeting of Park Board, they will look through the seminals and then we'll see what we get. Nothing, that's all I have. Thank you.
Move to abatement appointments. A, Amber Chatwell, one seventy North Marlin Drive, regarding appointment to the Planning Commission, Ward Two. This is the remainder of Councilman Parton's position. Ms. Crum?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, go ahead and have you appoint Amber Chatwell, one seventy North Marlin Drive, to the Planning Commission, uh, for Ward Two, for the remainder of the term.
Second.
Close second to approve the appointment of Amber Chatwell to the Planning Commission. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item Nin, opposite citizens, we've heard, there's no one in the audience, so I guess we don't have to hear anybody. Item Ten, exact situation, we have none. Item Eleven, there'll be pay, A, Ms. Ewer?
Yes, I would like to pass that we pay the bills for the first half of May. Second.
Close second to approve paying bills for the first half of May. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item Twelve, consent agenda, nothing. Item Thirteen, council item, A, council concern, council, any concern? Ms. Crum?
Not really concerned, just another item to maybe look at for capital improvements. And I know this has been brought up before, and we've always had to figure out a way to combat vandalism of the stuff, but, uh, I'd really like us to try to see if we can figure out a way to get some more trash cans and maybe some, uh, dog cleanup stations along the path, um, just to kind of help people. A lot of people might get out there and realize if they wish they would have brought something because they forgot about it. I think if you had those available, we might be able to keep the path cleaner, as well as with the trash cans out there, so we can try to keep some of the trash up off the ground.
Ms. Kanega?
Uh, yes, Tony, I, I was going down Hungerford the other day, and, uh, some of the manhole covers there are starting to really get sunk below the pavement. I hit one that, uh, was quite a jolt, so I don't know what can be done about that, but it, it's getting to be an issue, at least on Hungerford, I noticed.
We can cut around it, like square around it and re-assholt around it if needed, so we'll get done with that.
Ms. Custer?
I just had, uh, one thing with this being a Bike Month. I know, uh, I believe other council members or another council person has brought this up before as far as, uh, having some type of crosswalk, um, across Grand over by Marlin, for bike path. I want to see if we can get something, like something put on our capital improvement plan. People are trying to cross the, uh, Grand right there.